All right, this is January 18th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. This is the regular business meeting for District 96. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Barsadi?
Present.
Ms. Gunn?
Here.
Ms. Kleiber?
Here.
Mr. Marhol?
Here.
Mr. Muirhead?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Quorum is present?
All right, at this time, is there any public comment?
There is none.
There is not, okay. Then, at this time, are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
No.
All right, well, I'm going to insert an item here, and it's been a while since we've been out, so happy new year to everybody. Happy new year, everyone here. Now, we'll hand it over to Martha in the superintendent's report.
All right, good to see everybody virtually here tonight. I am going to introduce to all of you Mr. Pete Gass, the principal at Central School. I can't see quite that far down the room lead, but I think you're over there.
He's there.
So Pete is going to introduce our Central School student presenters tonight.
Thanks, Martha. It's been a while since I've done student presentations, and it's just another factor, another piece of kind of feeling like we're getting back to normal around here. So I'm not going to get too far into it. I have two 5th grade teachers along with six 5th grade students who are here to talk about something that Student Council is undertaking at Central. We had planned to do this next month, so we kind of had to fast-forward a little bit, but they put together, I think, a great presentation for you guys, and I'm going to turn it over to them.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, good evening.
We are going to turn it right over to our students.
Good evening, Riverside Board of Education members and community members. Thank you for inviting us to share some of the amazing things the Central Student Council is doing this year. This year, Mrs. Mazza and Mrs. McMahon are the new moderators for the Central Student Council.
In the past, Central Student Council has hosted a food drive that benefits Riverside families. They've also done a fundraiser to give back to a community in need.
We will still be doing both of these things, however, we also think it's really important to be more present as leaders in the central community, especially as 5th graders.
We've come up with a few new ideas, received a green light from Mr. Gass, and we can't wait to get started on this in February.
The idea we are most excited about is sharing our knowledge of SCL, social emotional learning skills, with the younger grades. We'll go into kindergarten through 4th grade classrooms each month to teach them about the monthly character education traits. Here's what it'll look like.
This will introduce the character educational traits for the month, and then we'll show pictures and ask the students what they noticed.
We will ask the students what the character education trait means and help them come up with a student-friendly definition.
We have the students list examples of what the character education trait looks like, sounds like, and feels like on chart paper, so I could keep it in their classroom to look back at for the month.
We will show the students a quote that relates to our character education trait of the month, then we thank the students for their participation and for being good listeners.
We are so excited to get to present to the younger students at Central next month for the character education trait.
Thank you so much for your time tonight. Do you have any questions for us?
I think for me, the most exciting part about this is this was student-initiated. This was something that they came and talked with their teachers about, and the teachers together collectively as student council leaders, came up with the idea and approached the leadership team in the building and said, "This is something we would like to try." Kids talking to kids, kids presenting to kids, because as we try to build in social emotional learning and make connections for students as they, you know, we get back to the normal part of school, those are the areas we're seeing with the kids right now. Those are the ones that are taking the longest to fill in, and perhaps a connection with an older student for a younger student is a way to make another bridge to get to where we want everybody to be. So I'm excited for it. I can't wait to see what things look like in a month.
So how'd you come up with this idea?
Well, our teachers thought it would be a good idea if we went to other classes and taught them a little bit of what we know about the different character traits in our education, giving them a little bit of our education to them.
So you have not gone and done that yet, because this was a fast, so this is what you're going to do. So how do you think it's going to go? Do you have any assumptions of what the engagement's going to look like with those younger students?
A bit well and maybe a bit crazy.
Do you think you'll have time to break into small groups or with individual students, or is it more of a whole group presentation? I don't know what the time allotted for, for your class schedules.
We're going to split into groups of three to judge the classrooms.
And these are just some representatives. We have a 40, 45 students that want to be in Student Council this year, so we're hoping to utilize and analyze all those kiddos in as many ways as we can, and then these are just representatives to say tonight.
That sounds exciting. Sounds like a great program you guys are off on.
Do you think the younger kiddos are going to learn, you're going to learn anything from them during this?
Probably a little bit, yeah.
Especially if they're siblings.
That could be a challenge right there at this point. Well, that's really exciting. I don't have any other questions, but I'm really impressed with the leadership you were all showing. It's really impressive.
Definitely showing a lot of initiative.
Let me tell you, a couple of years ago, when I first stepped into Ames, and I saw just, you know, the things on the walls, like, wow, this is really reflective of like growth mindset stuff, and then it really started coming out. And so just continuing to see that stuff perpetuate through the schools, and now you guys are actually teaching, like, not quite peer-to-peer, but it's a little different coming from you guys to the younger students than a teacher or some other adult. So I, this is something that we push through my office countrywide, globally, actually. I work for a global organization, and it's something we really push out there, trying to get adults to kind of get out of fixed mindsets and stuff. So I think this is fantastic that we're teaching this to our young students so that they can be more prepared to go out into the real world, and the fact that you are taking that and teaching the younger kids is just, that's awesome. So good luck with it. Hopefully, it's not too crazy for you.
Hopefully, being given an update is a good thing, too. See how it goes.
I agree.
That would be great.
I was thinking the same, that it would be good to get an update after you've done it, and absolutely, as you know, this is one of our strategic plan goals, too, is student ownership of learning in our learning environment and culture. So thanks to this group of Central students taking this on in a very real way. So thank you all so much.
And a very well-prepared and executed presentation.
Nice, Heather.
All right, I'll move on to always the less exciting parts of the superintendent's report, but no disrespect to our auditor from Eider Casella. Kevin Smith is here to present information about our annual audit, and I know you don't all have hard copy versions, so this, you're hearing this for the first time tonight, but wanted to give this presentation and get this underway, and then we'll get information to all of you, and if there's need for follow-up with Kevin, we can certainly do that. So Kevin, I'll turn it over to you.
Hey, everyone. Just to piggyback on that, I know you guys all love this presentation, so happy to be here.
You're following kids. You're following kids, so you got a tough act to follow.
Yeah, exactly. That's always the way it goes. I mean, I'm used to that, so it's not anything new. So, but like I said, thanks for having me, and thanks for allowing me to do this remote as well. Had a lot of driving today, a lot of other duties today, so it's just going to be hard for me to get down there in person. But as far as the audit itself this year, so field work went well. You know, Mahala and Jim got us everything we needed, and accurately, there still is some issues with the TTO, and the TTO not making entries. So the accrual entries, basically every year now for the last couple of years, we've had to go back and fix a lot of things. And there still ends up being an issue with accounts payable, where Mahal has to do a reconciliation. In order to figure that out, and what those differences are, in order to tie to accounts payable on what she knows accounts payable is, so that was really a big part of the holdup this year, was that reconciliation, having to get that done, and her fitting that into her schedule. So, but overall, everything else, you know, at your guys' district, it's great. You know, no management letter in the current year. We go through every year, look at you guys' internal controls, look to see if, you know, there's anything that we think needs to be improved upon. You know, time to time, we'll see small little things, and we'll go over that during next meeting, but nothing significant enough that would warrant a management letter that you guys would need to know about. So that's obviously good. We also go over just various other things that, you know, could be suggestions as well, and sometimes we'll put other matters on the management letter. Again, nothing that was significant enough that needed to be on a management letter this year. Like I mentioned before, journal entries we made for this year, journal entries basically the same as they've been in prior years. Again, fixing TTO things of them not making the accrual entries, and then making the accrual entries for this year, which is done every year at year end, to take your guys' books from cash basis to accrual basis for reporting purposes. As far as the report itself, I know you guys don't have a hard copy in front of you. Drafts are out. Jim has given us the MDNA wording to fix, to update that. That's been done, is working on processing now, so you guys should have finals here fairly soon, likely by the end of the week. But as far as the report itself, when you get ahold of that, you're going to see, it's going to look very similar to the past. As far as new accounting standards, GASB 87 was new this year. It's a lease standard where certain leases that have a right to use an asset could be brought onto the books as an asset and a liability for government-wide purposes. This wouldn't be on your funds like you guys normally used to look into, only government-wide. That was new for this year, so you will see some wording in your summary of significant accounting policies on how those are handled, how they're valued, if they do come on the books. This year, in the search that we did, there was nothing that actually fell under that standard, so there is nothing recorded, but you will see the summary of significant accounting policies, how those would be reported if they did come up. This is going to be something that we're going to be looking at every year now, so if you do sign a new lease, it falls under this, you know, that'll come on and could come on in the future. Next year, GASB 96 is also going to be applicable as well. It's basically the same thing as 87, except it's software-based type cloud-based softwares. So, you know, your accounting software, cloud-based software, you guys have a contract for that, that's going to come on there in a similar manner. Trainings are kind of being done with this right now, with it being new. There were some questions on what all is going to fall under this. You know, a big question is, a lot of the learning materials at schools are all online now, and how that factors in. Based on, from what I've seen so far, like, hopefully, that's not going to apply, because obviously, that's a ton of stuff. But, you know, in the same sense, you guys have a lot of textbooks in the past, that was never brought on as a fixed asset. So the hope is those aren't, types of things aren't going to apply, and it's going to be just bigger things, like I said, like your accounting software, maybe student management software, things like that that would come on there, but that's going to be for next year. So same kind of testing we'll do that we did for GASB 87 this year, look at that kind of stuff. Likely, more stuff's going to apply under 96, just the way things are now, where you moved from taking a packaged software and buying it and having more of a cloud-based type software, so that's probably going to be more applicable next year. As far as financial highlights, you know, pretty much all good things to say where you guys ended. Your total fund balances for the governmental funds, which is the balance that you guys are used to looking at, fell just under $23 million this year. It's essentially about the same spot that you were in last year. It's only a $230,000 decrease from last year. So the Ed Fund specifically ended at about 17.5 million, which was a little less than nine months of career expenditures. That's slightly up from last year, was eight months last year, but still a good spot to be in. It's not too high, not too low. O&amp;M ended up at about 2.2, which is about 10 months. Debt service is now basically zero, debt's paid off, no reason to hold the fund balance in there right now, so that was expected. Transportation funds, a little over a million, it's about 16 months of career expenditures, and that's significantly down from last year. Last year, you guys had a significantly higher fund balance, about 5.5 years, when reduced for COVID, reduced expenditures. So it was planned to spend this down and move this down, and you guys made a very large transfer that was approved at the board level in order to move some monies from there to fund capital projects. IMRF then ended up at about $530,000, or about eight and a half months. This is also another one that had been getting high, and we had noted, unless you guys know, last year this was getting high, so there was a spend-down of that and some movement of the property tax levies. So that's now in a very good spot. It's not too low, not too high, you're in a good spot there. Capital projects is at $600,000 at the end of the year. That's, you guys pretty much fund that as you need for capital projects, so no issues there. Tort Fund, this is the one that's still high, but it's going down. So it's at about five and a half years right now, but you guys spent it down significantly from last year, was at seven years last year, so it's going in the right direction, but that's one you're still going to want to keep looking at, at spending down. So overall, like I mentioned, and we're talking about the debt as well, funds are all in good shape. Financial Profile Score is at a four, which is at a recognition designation, and you guys are debt-free now, so that's very good. The government-wide financials then, so these are the financial statements you guys aren't used to looking at, where it has all your fixed assets, the pension liabilities for TRS and IMRF, and the other post-employment benefit liabilities. Ending net position there ended at about $47 million, which is a $3.6 million increase over last year. When you get to the, get a copy of the report, page 15 gives you a reconciliation of why that number's so different from the funds. And it basically, it has to do with the fact that capital expenditures, you guys' capital expenditures are much higher than depreciation. So when you get to the government-wide, capital expenditures are moved up into fixed assets, they're not an expense anymore, and then you have depreciation expense. So you got a difference there, which drives that number up. You also have differences related to the pension liabilities, which in most cases reduces the balance, but the pension liabilities are always done a year in arrears. So IMRF's done as a 1231, so what's in the financial statements is that's 123121, and TRS has always done a year in arrears as well. They have market effects that are obviously lagging behind what's going on now. So the market in 2021 was good. It helped the pension liabilities, so they actually, a lot of them fell. Next year, you'd be having a completely different conversation with that. We all know how everything's going in 2022, and that's what those are going to be valued on, so those pension liabilities are likely going to go up on the government-wide statements next year, and it's going to be a different conversation. And then also, the other thing is, you guys made your last debt payment. Same concept as capital assets, it's an expenditure on the funds, you get over to the government-wide statements, and that million-dollar-plus payment that you guys made, it reduces a liability and isn't an expense anymore. So that's another big difference between those statements as well. So those are the main differences. Like I said, once you get a copy of the report, page 20, I think I said page 15 earlier, but it's actually page 20, will actually give you a breakdown and reconcile from the funds to the government-wide. So in overall, footnote-wise, the footnotes in the report, no significant changes from the prior year, aside from updated numbers. So aside from that, those are what I like to hit on usually on an annual basis, so unless you guys got any questions, that's it for me.
Let me be the first to ask a dumb question. The first thing you talked about was a TTO, you were saying?
Yes.
So I'm sorry, could you explain that a little more?
The township treasurer's office, so your guys' cash balances are all held at the township treasurer's office, and they handle basically, or have access to all your accounting records. You guys input everything, but they're the ones that basically reconcile the bank accounts, have access to everything, and each year, we make entries for the accrual statements, because you basically operate on a cash basis all year, they're not making those entries. It was, it was a little better this year, just because they didn't do anything. Last year, it was worse, because they wanted to reverse a bunch of stuff. Mahal and Jim had tried to make the entries on their own, and made them correctly, but then the TTO one tried to reverse everything and get rid of it, because they didn't want it on accrual, they wanted it on cash for themselves. So that's, that's the issue, so nothing happened this year, so they at least didn't try and reverse everything, and then reversed everything incorrectly. So it was a little easier this year, but still entries had to be made for the prior year accrual entries in order to start off with good beginning fund balance numbers.
So it's not a problem in our office, it's a problem with theirs?
No, it is not a problem in your office at all, no, no.
Are there any recommendations about that TTO that other districts are doing that we could do to expedite their, I don't know, handling of things, or are we stuck?
So far, and Jim and Mahala have talked to them quite a bit, they're pretty unresponsive on their own end. I mean, really, you could try and get out of it, but that's a very lengthy and could be a very expensive process. You guys have a district not too far from you guys that just went through it, and it took a very long time, and it's, you know, like, it's still, it isn't done, you know, they're still back and forth with this stuff. So it can be a very lengthy process, and it has to be approved. So I mean, you could try and get out, spend the money, and it's still not get out. So districts have gone that route. I don't know that I would recommend that. I think at this point, it's, like I said, this year, it was, it was better, because they didn't try and reverse everything. So I mean, as long as they just don't change anything, it's easy enough for us to just make the prior year entries, get fund balance to work, and then start off with good numbers, make our accrual entries for the current year, and do that. It takes a little more time, I mean, it's not ideal, but at least we know where it's coming from. Last year was way more difficult, because they reversed a bunch of stuff, and it just didn't make sense. So it was trying to figure out, piece together what they did to even get to good starting numbers. So at this point, just starting off and making the prior year accrual entries, it takes a little more time, but it's not that difficult. That would be the route I would say to stick with, because like I said, trying to get out could be very, it could be very costly and very time-consuming.
Yeah, I think we had that discussion, didn't we?
We had a minute.
I think it came up with this, with your same recommendation, thank you.
How much do we pay them for this?
I had a legal opinion letter. We looked into that a number of years ago, about the possibility of leaving the township, and Kevin's absolutely right, I think it's considered essentially impossible unless the legislature makes a decision in that regard.
Right, I think the only other one I know were like, there wasn't that much of an issue, and I mean, this was even before my time, I just know about it, because, you know, you go to different districts, and districts in closer to the city are all in these things, and we have some that aren't, and, you know, there's a group of them that won't dissolve basically because of fraud. There was an issue, and a TTO basically dissolved, and all those districts got out of that because of that. That's obviously not happening, so, but, but yeah, I mean, trying to get out of this, it is, it's very difficult, it's a lengthy process, and like I said, you could go through and then just, it may not be approved, and you spend all the money for nothing anyways.
To be clear, it's, this is more an issue of the TTO is, to put it colloquially, having an issue with how they're entering their books. It's not an issue where there's actual malfeasance going on, it's just that they're doing a bad job of running their shop, correct?
It's correct. I mean, it's not even that they're doing a bad job of running their shop, it's that they want to run their shop a certain way that doesn't match up with the way you guys report things.
With our, and if I recall, we went to an accrual basis a couple of years ago, was that it? And so this kind of ties into that to some degree.
Yeah, you guys have been accrual basis for a while, but, so, but they operate on cash, so what they, they don't want the accrual numbers in there, because it messes with their operations essentially.
Okay.
So what caused the issue was, is one, Jim and Mahal wanted to make the accrual entries so that you guys had good fund balances that matched up to your honor report, they didn't like that, they didn't want that, and they wanted them reversed, so that everything was on cash basis for their purpose. So it's nothing to do with something going on, it just has to do with their cash basis, you guys are accrual basis for reporting purposes, they don't mix, so they want to have everything be cash basis.
Can you explain why that is? Are there a lot of districts that are still cash-based and not accrual, or is it the reverse? What's this reasoning?
For them, I don't know what their reasoning would be, you know, it, it works directly with the TTO. But I mean, there still is a group of cash bases audits, for sure. I mean, we do a decent portion of them. You see it less up north, in northern Illinois, and in the suburbs and things like that. I would say, once you get down in, you know, further out west, in some of the southern areas, you see it a lot more, it's cash basis and it's regulatory even, they're not even GASB. But there still are, I mean, we still have a decent amount of cash basis audits as well.
Do you, so the, we talk a lot about, like, the paying the debt down and being debt-free, and kind of how, like, unique that is. I'm just kind of curious, from your perspective, is that as unique as we feel it is, or do you have any thoughts on a district being debt-free?
Yes, it's pretty unique, I would say, for sure. I would say most, most of all the districts we deal with have some sort of debt. You know, I would say a larger portion than not absolutely do, and that's not even with school districts either. I mean, we audit a lot of villages, cities, townships, things like that, and it's pretty unique for them to even not have some sort of debt.
Other questions for Kevin?
Thank you. Here he is, he did a good job explaining, so thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, guys.
Hopefully, we saved you a lot of drive time.
Right. I just have two other quick items on the superintendent's report. One is just, they're really both just announcements. One is just announcing our virtual kindergarten information night of March 2nd. We had discussed, and you might recall, sort of the benefits of doing this virtually or in-person, or some kind of hybrid approach. Talked to our team and our leaders, and got some feedback informally from families, and we've decided to keep it virtual, so we know families of incoming kindergartners obviously have young children at home, and often, evening event can be challenging. We also found that the virtual event is really, has given us a really good opportunity to do this in both English and Spanish, which had been one of our other concerns when we were doing it in person, was how to best do that with them, two languages, with, you know, essentially at the same time. So the decision is to continue to move this forward virtually, so we will post it on March 2nd, and then it's available on our website anytime that parents want to view the information. And the information is both about registration and residency, and all the important information about sort of signing up for kindergarten, signing up for the school district, so to speak, and also meant to provide a nice overview of kindergarten information in general from our kindergarten teachers. So that is how we will be doing it on March 2nd of 2023, and ongoing for the families that are registering, that's how they'll get their information this year. And then I just have one other announcement, actually, there's an event, it's tomorrow night, hosted by the C4, which is the Cross-Community Climate Collaborative, and it is closely tied to the Village of Riverside. I had attended one initial planning meeting with them, and actually, our Evergreen Club, which is one of our clubs at Hauser that's focused on environmental issues, has already helped them with some of their signage and preparation for the event tomorrow night, and I, it's my understanding that those students and the staff that run that, facilitate that club with them will also be there. So this is a community-wide event, my understanding is it's really kind of intended to be almost like a community-wide focus group to get feedback from the community at large about a number of climate issues. So just wanted to share that word, I think it's... word. I think it's, um, exciting that the village and, um, this particular collaborative group is working together to kind of highlight some of those issues. And certainly as a school district, we will, um, be engaged partners with them. Any questions about either of those two things? If not, Dan, that's the end of the superintendent's report.
Okay, great. Uh, then the next item on the agenda is, uh, the consent agenda. Uh, can the board secretary, uh, read the contents of tonight's consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of meeting minutes from the December 7th, 2022 Committee of the Whole meeting, the minutes from the December 21st, 2022 regular business meeting, the personnel report as presented in board book, payables pre-list as of January 18th, 2023, payables pre-list as of December 31st, 2022, and, um, review of closed session minutes from the previous six months.
Okay. Do any items need to be taken off for further discussion? All right. If not, is there a motion that, uh, the board approved tonight's consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, are we ready to vote? All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Uh, next item is Riverside Education Council. They don't appear to be here this evening. Okay. Uh, then next up are board member comments. But no, I just randomly chose you.
Spotlight. Yeah. I don't know. Happy New Year.
We saw any holiday shows. Did anybody go to any good holiday shows over, uh?
We talked about this last time.
Did we?
Yeah. No, mine was in fourth grade now, so we didn't have one. So I'll be, yeah, we'll do the next stage, but no, I'm, we didn't have one.
Lovely two week break.
Yeah.
Nice to have a little bit of a break. I agree. Definitely.
I was skeptical about that second week break coming like after January 3rd, but I think I liked it. Well, I think it's gonna happen again, right? I'm glad I liked it because it looks like that's what's happening again. But I was initially a little skeptical about that. I was like, I don't know, but. It worked well.
Everybody got all their shopping done? I know we were kind of busy right up until, uh, until Christmas. I guess that's the trade off. You know, you have the kids out earlier, you know, uh, before Christmas and it's less busy or you have more time to prep for the holiday. And then otherwise have a little bit of a layoff and you get to travel. Excited. All right. Uh, and that will bring us next to committee reports. Uh, first off is Policy Committee.
Yeah, I don't have anything, um, specific. I don't think for today, to tonight's meeting. Martha, correct me if I'm wrong. Just reminder that we'll be, um, presenting the policies from the press, uh, 110 update in February and March. So we're going to be dividing those up. There's also perhaps some other kind of miscellaneous, um, policies that the, Martha and I are, are looking at and reviewing to bring to the board then as well. And then I'll work with, um, Kathy just to send out that email just for our familiarization, ongoing, um, knowledge of policies to email, like which ones we should just kind of be perusing in our spare time, um, in the month of January and, and kind of February.
It's three sections, I think.
Yeah. And again, it's not really for any action or stringent reading. It's just more knowledge of those sections, better knowledge of those sections.
And Stephanie, I made note of those sections one, three, and eight, just as a sort of a, um, at the very end of the meeting. We didn't attach the policies. We agreed it was just be kind of a reminder. So one thought, I guess we could attach that under this part of the agenda in the future, but it's on the latter part of the agenda.
Yeah, we'll send it, we'll send an email just hyper linking out to those sections in the, in the policy manuals.
And just know one, three, and eight are all short. They're very short policy. I just looked through them all and you can make them in 20 minutes.
Not bad, not bad.
Thanks.
Yeah. They're a nice base lot, like good start in January. They're real foundation.
Manageable.
So.
Was there anything, anything I missed, Martha, on policy?
No, no, I think that's it. Thanks, Stephanie.
Yeah, I know I owe you an email on some, on some dates to get together. So.
Exactly. As you said, February and March will be much more robust in terms of policy discussion.
All right, then. That's it.
All right. Uh, the next up is facilities.
Thanks, Dan. Facilities met last Friday. Um, you have the agenda in front of you, but the items that I think we should highlight, Dave can support or add a few more if necessary here. Uh, we know that we approved that Blythe bid. Construction is going to start March 27th, and this is so that the contractor can get a start on, um, being ready to do their heavier work in the summer right away. So there will be some light demolition in the auditorium and the contractor will be, uh, allowed to use the north parking lot. This will mean that there is an out, the basement of the building of Blythe will be closed off to students and staff, and that's to keep the contractor people separate from our educational work. And this is something that's very doable. It won't be disruptive to the operation, but somebody's going to be inconvenienced, um, to some degree. And that is an acceptable element of getting this work done. The Hauser auditorium, we've started some.
If I can just interject for a second, should also be pointed out that we were going to do this, other schools, we were going to start construction on the other schools for the other facilities, but we didn't. Well, we started when we did, but because of COVID, we were able to. So I just want to point that out that this is not.
Does not.
Sorry, Joel.
No. I'm gonna die.
No, it's gonna, the work is gonna.
Yes, COVID, COVID made.
School, so, school still is going to be in session.
Yeah.
The di- the light demolition work in the basement will be during, while school is still in session, starting March 27th. But it's down in the auditorium where it's, only the auditorium will, will be off limits to our purposes. So art in the card or music or, you know, use of that space will, will not be available for the rest of the, this school year.
Cause I thought spring break was March 2nd.
Well, it might be. I mean.
But there's still going to be.
Beyond. It's gonna take longer than the week. It will start and continue on through the summer.
Yes. On, once they start work there, there's no one's gonna be allowed there till next fall.
You think there's gonna be an appreciable amount of noise or it's manageable because it's down there?
This is light demolition. This means taking thing, this dismantling the.
Okay. So nothing too serious.
The seats, taking the wall panels down. Um.
There's no busted concrete or anything like that.
Devolution is a strong word for.
Yeah, demo, whenever I heard demo, I was like, oh.
Yeah.
That's right. Light demo.
Gotcha.
Um, and one assumes that because Casmira is also being included in the process, that she'll be able to.
Speak up if it's an issue.
Identify if there's an issue or not.
Yeah.
Is that?
No. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, we've started pre-purchasing some of the equipment for the Hauser auditorium work. Um, at Hauser and Central, uh, DLA had conversations with the village and the village noted that a couple of the trees in front really are not, uh, they're more sensitive to construction work and therefore the DLA plan for the playground doesn't really fit very well there. So we're going to be looking at some space trade offs and potentially moving the, most likely moving the playground to the back and then looking at what could be placed in that low spot in front of, uh, Central that still maintains all the, the features we were looking for.
Was that an assessment from the village?
Forester.
Forester, thank you.
Yes, there's two, there's an elm tree and two oak trees.
Yeah.
The elm tree is not in good shape. We know that, but oak trees are very sensitive and their root system extends out past, well, to the drip line. And the drip line is essentially up to wherever you see leaves. So as far as the tree canopy goes, that's the distance that the tree wants to be underground.
Oh, okay. All right. Hadn't really thought about that.
Um, so we had an extensive discussion about what to do with the old playground and that kind of aged more, uh, young kids playground. And then shifting things to the back. And DLA has looked at a plan that makes that work.
Yeah.
Um, and then also some discussion about potential moving of the existing maintenance garage that is in that back area someplace else in the village, but that's a very long term thing. But, um, something for future consideration.
Based on that revised design, I didn't go back and do a side by side, but it looks like we're losing like 10,000 square feet of the green space, I think. I think it was like, like 50 to 40 something.
Right. But then that green space area, potentially you can make that area the lowest spot where the playground used to be.
Yeah.
Because you can do less intensive things in the area in front. Or at least that was the discussion.
Yeah. I mean, I thought I, I didn't have any issues with it. Um, just with the proposed village zoning and planning and anticipated February approvals from the village, are we going, like, are we set on that design? Is that the design the village is looking at that we're moving forward with?
Uh, they will be. I, DLA is still vetting out that playground location.
And are we gonna, is that gonna be, that's not that far away? So I know Martha had said she's working with, um, folks at Central and stuff like that, the PTA and things like that. So we're, yeah.
Martha, I believe you spoke to the PTA recently.
Yeah, I actually spoke to Hauser PTO last night and, um, their only question was, um, of course, the interest in the surface of the recreational field, which has not been determined. I had shared that. Um, that'll be a board decision at a later date. And their one question was just to how they should best communicate with you to let, um, their opinions be known on that. And I suggested either email or public comment.
Yep.
Yes.
Joel, for the front end, do you think, and I know you don't know for sure, but would the architect still thinking then if it's a lesser or lighter use? Is it still a kind of a kindergarten first grade area? Or could it be something totally different and all the play equipment is in the back? Did, what is that?
Thought was that that play equipment that's there right now is, we knew when we did the central work two years ago or three years ago, that it was getting out of date.
Yeah.
Um, but I mean, we talked about it and perhaps what we lose in the back moves to the front.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So that's, does it become a reading nook? Does it become that outdoor, arbitrarily called a learning center, something that's still compatible with being in front of those classrooms?
Right. I know they had done even some construction work because of the wood damage on the front playground. Um, that remember when they took it apart and they realized it was deteriorating. But that'll be interesting to see. Yeah. Thank you.
That, that's part of the, the thinking here is that that playground really is, it's, it's had a good life.
Used a lot, but yeah.
Now we're gonna send it to a farm in upstate New York.
Looking, looking for places for it to land.
Yeah.
Um, we discussed a little bit about Hauser lockers and looking at costs of a full replacement versus some kind of staged work. Um, and that'll, we'll hear more from the architect on that. They've got some pricing that's through the consortium, but some of those costs are, uh, with the current market and steel costs. Those are not, those costs expire very quickly. So the architect has to think, and Ramesh have to think a lot more about that.
Just, just to give people an idea, at least, just what we're saying, I mean, the contractor, the quotes would only be good for 15 days.
That's it.
So.
It's nothing.
That deserved, yeah, so.
Steel prices fluctuate that much?
That's.
I guess.
Yeah.
Wow.
They have been lately. And they're saying that things will settle down in the next couple of years.
I mean, it must be pretty volatile to have such a short window. So it's interesting.
Some of this is inflation and if we, costs will go up, but they'll also become more settled where you know what you're gonna get.
Yeah.
And it doesn't expire after 15 days.
The market is very weird right now.
Some of the, the other major item we talked about was security upgrades and, uh, Don gave us a presentation on that, which was very helpful and comprehensive and basically looking at a very, a well thought out upgrade to some systems that are starting to hit their end of life, but trying to do that in an intelligent manner and essentially cycling through the equipment we do have, replacing it new on a building by building basis and also upgrading it significantly to new capabilities, just the latest, um, without, without going overboard.
What's the general life of that stuff these days?
Don, I have to defer that question to you.
Just feels like lifespan of everything is getting significantly shorter than it used to be.
I feel like it's five years everything.
Planned on.
Yes, exactly.
Plan and then it breaks.
No, planned.
Place right now, we've been here since.
Where I got here.
Yeah.
Uh, we've, we've changed, swapped out the, the DVRs, individual DVRs. They're, they're all building based. They're independent units. Um, so what we'd look to do is replace the cameras with digital cameras and then move that technology to the cloud. So there's no physical footprint of any hardware here. So all the storage would be in the cloud. The other component of it is to integrate it with our key fob system so that there's, uh, but when the, when the two are integrated together, it just provides you some good information in terms of, you know, who's accessing when, or if you need to pull video, um, at particular times around, especially and we're, we're focusing on the entrances in the perimeter of the building.
Yeah.
Uh, the internal stuff, we look really more for one-to-one, uh, replacement, or if there's any identified areas that are considered blind spots.
So we have existing storage for the housing, for that security now in a room somewhere?
Each building has its own system.
Has its own room.
Yeah. It's, it's, think of it like a VCR.
Is it like a closet or is it real space?
It's, it's about the size of an old VCR.
Okay.
But it's just essentially, it's, it has a lot of hard drives in it.
Gotcha.
And so the camera's just right to that. So again, it's an older technology.
So any replacement if it's going to the cloud? Is that like a Wi-Fi based system then, or?
Well, they'd be, they'd be hardwired cameras.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so they would have, um, that would really just uses, utilizes our, our network and our internet connection to get out. But they're, yeah, they're, they're not, they're not, um, uh, they're not Wi-Fi, uh, devices. They are cable devices. The current cameras that we have are cabled with coaxial cable. Again, it's an older technology. This would be network cabling that would need to be run, uh, in its replacement.
The cameras themselves, like seven years, five years, 10 years?
The, the cameras themselves currently are.
The new ones, like what is the expected life of the new ones?
I would say, I, I would probably say at least 10 years.
Yeah. Oh, really?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. You know, it really depends on, you know, what your need is. These are gonna be high def cameras. The ones we've had have been in place for 14, you know, uh, you know, they've been, they've been around for a while. So.
So I'm just thinking as you're talking, like building by building, we've been trying to build a better kind of ongoing maintenance plan. So are we gonna do like, are we gonna do building by building in cycle? When you say cycle, is it like do one building?
The system itself, so we're the psych, we're cycling out some of the equipment that's going, uh, which is reaching obsolescence is, has to do with the, uh, the key fob system.
Okay.
So the controllers that talk to those devices, your, your door swipes and the locks, those controllers are that, um, they've, they've reached end of life in December.
Okay.
So if we, if we need to replace them, if, if one of the components went out, because there's controllers and subcontrollers, if one component went out, you have to replace the whole stack.
Okay.
So what we'll do is we'll replace a whole stack probably here, but then we'll have those, that old equipment in the event we have any failures.
Yeah.
Over the next couple of years. So we'll routine it as parts and probably do it over a three-year basis. We'll probably, you know, we'll do Ames and then probably Blythe Hollywood or vice versa.
Yeah.
And that, you know, we'll kind of group them that way.
And then we'll just set up our maintenance cycle, like these are the buildings that we really need to focus on unless something happens to one of the other buildings.
Exactly. But at least if, if, right, if something did happen, we'd at least have the hardware to be able to support.
Yeah. So that we don't have to do the whole district at the same time.
Exactly. We'd be able to do it over a few years. Just spread it out a little.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Thanks.
Thank you, Don. And I think the, the other, the last item that we talked about was there was some discussion about the Hauser late start and that there have been some complications with teacher scheduling because of, I think we're at an 8:30 start, Martha. And to shift that by 10 minutes to move, uh, to help out with teacher scheduling and the end of the day. And that didn't, there was no issue seen with doing that. The commentary from Sarah, the traffic engineer, was that having the split in time is ideal because that lets you spread out our arrivals and departures, but shifting by 10 minutes gets us somewhere where just a little bit better. And we again noted that a lot of the issues with the entry to the school and departure is a lot about behavior of the drivers and not being super efficient when they come and go. So it's more of an individual user issue rather than a process problem.
Yeah, who wants to volunteer for the patrol, anybody, for outside?
Uh, I've been out there.
I'm just teasing, but it's, you're talking right.
Well, no, I've, I, it needs to be said and I'm saying it, so. It operates best when there's an officer out there because people pay good attention to the officer.
Better, better attention. I don't know if they pay good attention, but better attention.
When I was out there.
I still people, I still see people do really dumb stuff directly in front of police officers.
They may, but when he points at the person, they tend to respond much better than
Yes, correct.
when staff points and says, get a move on.
Yeah, I think, I think another issue is that we have people leaving their vehicles and then just leaving them there and getting out and going to get the child when they're supposed to be in the line, so.
I would be.
And Mr. Gatz, and I'm with that school, but he does a great job communicating, like, guys, we gotta do better. It's really just a matter of communication and keep on it, but it's, I don't know if we can solve it, but.
It, it's, like I said, it's, it's a user issue more than anything else.
Yeah.
But that, I think, there were a few other items we covered, but I think for right now, this, those are the highlights.
Uh, I, I actually had a couple of questions. Um, let's, going back up to the Blythe Park where you talked about additional exterior path. I didn't think that was the one that I had asked about at the last meeting.
That was exactly.
Oh, was it? Okay.
We need to verify exactly the location you were speaking about.
Okay.
Make sure that, uh, DLA wanna make sure they had a full understanding of what your, your thoughts were.
Okay. Happy to show them. I'm usually there between eight and eight-ten.
And actually, Dan, I, I, Ryan Kelly then sent me a drawing that I was gonna share with you tonight and have you literally draw on it. I'm gonna email that to you.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, that's fine.
And another item?
Uh, the other item was the, the, towards the bottom where you talked about the Ames fence and Ames dead trees, area dead trees.
Uh, that was just to note that the fence improvement that had been requested by the neighbor was fully installed, was installed. And then there were some dead trees in the parkway that were removed.
I know there were several.
It was, it was a coordination issue.
Okay.
And we will need to better water them when the new trees go in.
Okay. Cause I, I know there were several on, on different sides of the school along with, looked like a tree that was not quite dead yet, but on its last legs overhanging that play area. I don't know if that had been discussed or not.
The dead trees that were overhanging the play area are the ones that have been removed.
Really? So they're the big ones then?
Other neighbors' property, but worked with the village and those have been removed. The ones that are on the parkway that just didn't make it, those were new trees planted in the parking lot.
Right.
Um, those will be replanted in the spring by the village and the village will charge us appropriately for the cost of those trees.
Okay, so that's something we get charged for and it's essentially, we didn't set up the right maintenance for them?
That was what.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was the conclusion. And I've seen a bill from the village for trees and they run from 350 to 450 per tree, which is, it's just a pass-through, so.
Okay. Thanks, Joel. Martha's still there? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the next up is the education committee.
Well, we're not meeting until the 27th, so we don't have anything today unless I'm speaking out of turn, Angela, but I don't think we'll be reporting back until later.
All right. Uh, and the personnel committee?
I do not have anything new for tonight.
Okay, uh, last but certainly not least, uh, finance committee. Mm-hmm. Okay. Sounds good. Then next up is old business, and I should clarify to everyone here, uh, the item listed under old business as an action item, we are not going to be acting on it this evening as we have not, uh, the legal review was not completed in time. I think the contract came in, uh, early Friday or midday Friday and it just hasn't got back from lawyers yet. So not ready to be voted on at this time. All that said, is there any discussion on that? Is there any questions of what was presented or anyone have any thoughts on that?
I think I understood. Have we heard anything either anecdotally or, I mean, I haven't really seen emails or anything since we last discussed it kind of publicly in our meeting from the community, of interest in exploring this? Anybody?
I just saw, I, I haven't heard anything directly and we haven't got any emails through. And I don't know, Martha, if you've had any outreach, but I just noticed that Landmark published something yesterday, so I, people may not even realize.
Realize that we were, yeah.
At this point.
Right.
Yeah, I had not heard anything. I didn't receive any parent emails and I know if you had received them to the Board of Ed, I would have also seen copies. So I did not see any of that. Um, and I, and I hadn't noticed the Landmark story yet. I know Bob School like had reached out to me with the possibility of doing a story on it.
So maybe.
So maybe that'll generate some feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just saw it today, but I noticed the date was yesterday that it actually got published, so. May not just be out there enough.
Do you always do the online on Tuesday, I guess?
Mm-hmm, usually on Tuesday.
Cause I think paper's on Wednesday.
And it was right before the holiday break that we talked about that too.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
And, uh, uh, we have a P, PTL, we have the PTA PTO meeting that we do, whatever that's called, on PLT, thank you. One, some version of those letters. And, uh, if, if it, I mean, if you guys want, I could bring it up there. I'm sure we'll get feedback from the, the five presidents or three, I guess, of the, those that don't have it. Maybe spread it that way.
Mm-hmm.
Thoughts, opposition?
I mean, it's always welcome. I would imagine it'd be what we've heard before, which is people asking for it.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, of course, I wanna hear.
That was the conversation I saw on social media that's been several months ago. Again, I think it's definitely important to emphasize that these are not, uh, it's not gourmet by any stretch of the imagination. I know, I think this company does, they work with RB and I've not heard the greatest compliments coming back from my, my daughter on the meals that she gets there. Although she does eat them, so there's that.
Sounds like dinner in my house. Not a lot of compliments from my children. How could I hate it?
Yeah.
Similar comments in our house too.
Well, it's definitely a starting point and I think, you know, I'd encourage the board if, it was my hope years ago, if you ever wanna get something more robust or more, I don't know, whatever you wanna call it, um, comprehensive, there's time to do this. I think this is a good starting point, though.
Yeah. Yeah. One of the things we always do there is go over the board agenda and ask for any questions. So since this is on the agenda, then I'm sure it'll spark some conversation on Monday. So by the next meeting, um, maybe I was, maybe I can, if we get any interesting or conflicting or differing opinions or something like that, I can send a note out to the, just kind of a one-way communication or something to inform you all before the next meeting. And I see it says here, uh, if the board would like a Quest consultant to attend, we, is that, I assume we just wrote that in there? Cause that was a question from Martha.
I think, I'm, I'm assuming they offered. Um, I, I personally would love to hear the presentation and if nothing else, it would help to spread awareness of it, I would think. Would that make sense?
Is Jim still back there in the corner?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He is.
Yeah.
You, you think that would, you think that would actually provide additional value to us? Will, will we have questions? I'd hate to drag somebody out here for like a five-minute thing.
Yeah, I mean, is it different than the proposal that we saw or, you know, is it more, right, either way?
More of a sales.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my, my personal thought is if we were looking at other vendors, I think it'd be worthwhile, but I don't know what value we would get out of it considering that we goaries are committed to this.
I was kind of thinking maybe a, uh, like a postmortem type thing, like once we get toward the end of the year, maybe before school ends, they could come in and say, here they are. Rather than like a pre-one, cause I, I think we're just kind of exploring, so.
I thought you were, yeah, I thought you were referring to a pre-one, like.
Yeah, I mean, it just says, we'll, we'll continue on this matter and see if the board would like a Quest consultant to attend either the February Cow or February Business. I think that's probably too soon, but maybe in May?
May would be.
When they start to do their initials.
That make, Leslie, that makes sense because we're hiring them to be a consultant, provide advice, make their observations about how well the operation runs and where the improvements can be.
Yeah.
Right.
And so when we hear them give us feedback and then we can assess from there, do we want to continue with their services?
Right.
Or move a different direction?
Right.
That seems appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah, otherwise it seems to me more of like a, just a sales meeting pitch that we've already read, so.
Yeah, it would be interesting though, and I don't know who we should get from them or from our staff, be, how are things going today? What are the pros, the cons? What's going on all day? And what is gonna change, what would be better, pros and cons of, uh, at the end? So that, I think that would be beneficial.
Jim, is that something you can even up one-page memo on what the, what our current staff thinks is good and bad? So that we've got a, something to compare against what Quest says.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea. Doesn't need to be super complex, but here's the things we think are really good and here's the things we think we could change and then we can, yeah.
Well, at point memo, this isn't a research paper, this is just what, yeah.
Yeah, actionable things.
Yeah, and then Quest can come in and we can kind of compare their opinions on it and, you know. So I don't think we need anybody from Quest February, but probably toward the end of their consulting period maybe. So if you wanna relay that to them, just so they can prepare for it. Okay, we can do that.
Okay. So it's good. Anything else on the lunch proposal? All right, and if not, that brings us to new business. Uh, the first item listed is the, uh, school calendar for next year, 2023, 2024 school year.
I think it makes most sense for Angela to come up and provide just a kind of a, a brief overview of the, the component parts of the calendar for the coming school year.
Again, it's a regular podium.
Very official.
It's a whole new thing for me. All right. So the calendar team and I met, um, December 15th and we discussed the goals of planning a school calendar, um, including that we wanna make sure we try to align our winter break and our spring break with Riverside Brookfield High School, uh, that we've normally had two institute days prior to students' start of school, an institute day in February, um, that's on the weekend of Presidents' Day, and an institute in October that's on the weekend or follows Columbus Day. So we talked about how that's been past practice. We also talked about the half-day professional development, uh, session that we had planned for April. We didn't wanna remove that from the upcoming calendar, even though we, um, haven't had it yet this year to show the effectiveness, but being optimistic, being positive thinkers, we wanted to leave it as it is, feeling that it is going to be, uh, a very beneficial half-day of professional learning. And so we knew that we wanted to recommend keeping it for the 23, 24 school year. So after having a conversation around traditional calendar planning, we did arrive at the recommendation that you have, um, in the board book. And that includes staff institute days on Monday and Tuesday of August 21st and 22nd, with the students' start on Wednesday, August 23rd. It does have, um, on that recommendation, it does have Institute Day on the Tuesday following Columbus Day, parent-teacher conferences the Thursday evening of November 16th, and then the full day, that Monday, November 20th, with non-attendance days on Tuesday and Wednesday of that week, and then the Thanksgiving holiday for the Thursday and Friday. Winter break aligned to Riverside Brookfield High School on December 25th through January 5th. And then Institute Day in February, as happens usually, um, on Friday, February 16th, with spring break again aligned with RB on March 25th through, um, the following Monday. Then we did, as I said, plan for the half-day professional learning on the last Friday in April, April 26th, with the last day of school being Friday, May 31st. Um, so that's the recommendation that we had come up with as a calendar team. Following that recommendation, we started talking about a couple of things, just kind of sitting around and chatting. And one of the things that the, um, team of teachers brought up was that they actually would like to see conferences earlier than the end of the trimester, than that November time. And so we did have a discussion around the possibility of moving conferences to mid-October, which is when Riverside Brookfield High School also has their conferences. But through a few conversations, not just with the team, but with other stakeholders as well, what we have determined is that we do wanna recommend the traditional calendar that you have in the board packet, but we wanna take this upcoming year, the upcoming school year, the 23, 24 school year, to have serious conversations with stakeholders, including board members, including, um, so when I say board members, the education planning committee, to bring back to the board as a recommendation possibly, um, with the REC leadership, with the district leadership. We wanna have conversations with staff members around what would conferences in mid-October look like? What's the purpose of conferences in mid-October? And make sure we're all on the same page before we make that recommendation. And so if we do that legwork, we do that work during the 23, 24 school year, we may come to the table then with a recommendation for the 24, 25 school year with a moved conference. But that is a discussion that, um, we wanted to make sure the board was aware of now that it's starting to come up and that we'll have further conversations about that in the upcoming school year. Do you have any questions for me about the recommendation for the 23, 24 calendar? All right.
Just on your, on your, two things. On your comment with the, just kind of, without having additional stakeholder research and all that, like, I don't, it doesn't feel bad to have it in October. I, personally, I feel like it is kind of late, like you're kind of far into the year. But it would be interesting, like, how do you, how do you shake out those hours if you don't have that full day? You'd probably have to break them up more and/or the teacher's gonna wanna stay later and does that help the parents get it? So that'd be kind of interesting to hear about. So just kind of a thought there. I felt like we had talked about potentially doing like a second half-day. Did you just take that off the table or am I making that up?
No, we have talked about adding additional half-days. The conversation with, um, REC and even when we talked about the half-days in different conversations, and one of them was through negotiations also, the conversation was, um, that the union wanted to see how the first one went.
Okay.
Before we added additional. And since we haven't had it yet, before we're developing the calendar for the upcoming year, the teachers were hesitant to add a second one without seeing how it goes first.
Okay.
So if we were to add potential, if we were to add more, that would happen in that 24, 25 calendar, so.
I was gonna say, I know one of the concerns had also been about a half-day is what, what impact would that have on children? Obviously, it's a shift in their instructional day, but, um, we had talked well in advance with our PTAs and PTOs about perhaps doing some kind of fun family student engagement activity that afternoon. Um, and also Riverside Parks and Rec, I believe, is offering an afternoon session. So, um, children should have the opportunity to have, you know, be covered in terms of any childcare needs. And I know we're eager to hear from our staff just how a half-day professional development feels compared to, um, an after-school time, which we know can be challenging after a full day of teaching. And sometimes a full day is, sometimes more than needed. So I'm eager to give this a try.
Yeah.
One quick thing, um, so as we go through this year and figure out about moving conferences or not, would that mean, like currently, we always have that week of, you know, District 96 families have that week of Thanksgiving off? And so that would probably shift, is what I'm?
That's part of the conversations that started to come up with, when we started talking about, could we do it this, for the 23, 24 school year? That was part of the conversation that started to come up and the team tried to be creative about how could we make that work? But that's where Martha and I were talking and just realized there's, there's a little bit more legwork than just trying to make it happen this month, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I feel like that, that would be something that would need to be kind of made very public because I know people make vacation plans for that week.
Right.
Whether we're going that way or not, I have no idea, but just something to think of. It's kind of like been built into the culture here at District 96 that that week is always a non-attendance week, so.
Definitely would need to be widely advertised, although it's important to note the RB, I think they, they attend the first couple of days.
They attend through about Wednesday, through Friday.
Through Wednesday.
Through Wednesday.
Although I do remember us at some point making that decision because we had such attendance problems with people going out of town and it was better just to have the week rather than lose the children in the classroom because they were gone anyway. So, yeah, a lot of conversations.
Things to explore this year.
Right.
Yeah, it's just, calendar-wise, it's weird to, that it ends in May and even though it's the same number of, you know, pupil instruction days. And even though it's the same number of, you know, pupil instruction days and institute days, cause we started on the same time last year, August twenty-fourth, and we end June sixth. And now it's like we're starting at the same time, but we end May thirty-first, um, but.
And I haven't quite figured that out. Kathy and I have counted it a number of times.
Yeah, I'm like, am I, is it a leap year? That doesn't quite account for all of it, but, um, I, I thought there was more like a desire conversation, at least among the educators and maybe some of the, um, working groups that involve community members for like later starts, later end. So like, how is a May thirty-first sitting with, I don't know, teachers or anyone who may have seen this proposed? Cause I know last year we had like two versions, one that started like the seventeenth way earlier. Um, and then the one that started when we did.
Um, so the, the staff that have seen the recommendation draft felt that May thirty-first was actually better, that you just, you start to lose the students as, and not like physically lose them, just mentally lose them as we get into June, more days into June. So stopping May thirty-first seemed more, it seemed more instructional-friendly for the staff members that saw the recommendation calendar, um, rather than starting August thirty-first and then going into that first week of June. But, um, definitely something that can be further talked about if that's what the board would like to see happen.
I guess along those similar lines, and I realize that's not this year we're talking about it, but those first, those three days prior to Thanksgiving, I kind of wonder about, you know, the instructional quality of those three days and are you starting to lose the students? And what, what all's going on those three days?
When we talk, which three days?
This is not for this year, this is.
When we start talking about conferences moving and what to do in November? That would definitely be part of that conversation as well and conversations we have with the Education Planning Committee, with staff members, with REC leadership, um, you know, the, the benefits and challenges of going a whole, going the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday or Monday, Tuesday, and then the benefits and challenges of having that week off and just the optics also for both pieces.
And then the spring break being the full week plus then the Monday right after that's because that is how the RB landed?
That's how RB landed.
Mm-hmm. Cause this, this year there's like a break and then it's on Friday, that technically falls on Good Friday.
Mm-hmm.
So it'd be the Monday.
And that's because the, that Friday that ends up always being a non-attendance day is in spring break for the twenty-three, twenty-four year, Easter's during spring break that year.
Oh, yeah, I guess that moves too, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of time. It's a lot of time off.
Other questions or just points to consider when thinking about recommending, recommendations for the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar?
I, I have to say, I mean, you kind of, you said it kind of a number of days multiple times, but ending it, I would think in the May is, I do think a much better, um, way to end the school year. I've never sort of, I've always been perplexed why we end on like a Tuesday or a Wednesday. It's, so I do think ending on a Friday at the end of the month, um, is, I, I, I like that idea. Hopefully, we can count that many days next year, comes out the same way.
That would be nice.
Yes.
If I could figure out how we did it, I'd work on that.
Is it worth noting as well that, uh, I know that oftentimes in years past, we've started creeping into June due to snow days and that's not really anticipated in this calendar?
Correct. Um, and that's because we would have those, you know, or the e-learning days.
Let's see, we still have emergency days, but it's not, I guess.
We do build the emergency days in. Um, our e-learning plan allows for up to five e-learning days. If by some chance there was some type of emergency that lasted longer than five days, we would have to start going into those emergency days of the calendar.
State actually requires you to still keep those emergency days in there, whether or not you're planning e-learning days or not. So they're just a, they're almost kind of a placeholder on the calendar for those, you know, highly unexpected situations, I guess.
I guess just when, when this is announced, that's definitely something that would need to be well communicated, that just because they're emergency days there, that's not necessarily, we, the likelihood they would be used is less than previous years.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next then is the board self-assessment, possible dates in June. And I don't know if anyone noticed their email this morning, their facilitator, uh.
I saw that.
Lori.
Got promoted.
Yeah.
Well-deserved.
Yeah.
Uh, I think her start date announced in the email is, is after, just after, where we were talking about.
July.
Um, that said, I, I don't know, Martha, did you, did you hear back from Lori?
I did. So, you know, ironically, I had placed this on the agenda, just thinking now that it's twenty-twenty-three. If you recall, we were holding, we are holding June sixth and June eighth, um, with Lori. It's something we had talked about when we did the self-assessment last summer, that maybe doing it earlier this year would be better, there'll be two new board members, and that maybe June is better than August in regard to time. She was not available the typical Wednesday, which would be a committee, the whole meeting, so, um, holding the sixth and the eighth. Um, I did reach out to her and said, with this change in her role, would she still be doing the, um, our self-assessment? And she said, yes, she's holding the dates that she's already confirmed. Well, honestly, she's confirmed two dates with us, but she would like confirmation. So I had sent it out just because I felt it was a good item for us to clear up in our calendars. And then she, um, now because of this change is all the more needing of confirmation of one of those dates. So it's really a Tuesday or a Thursday, right? Um, and I don't know if the board has, um, sort of insight to their calendars, if we wanna plan on one, if we want Kathy to follow up with everybody, and then we could just, this, so this is really just putting it back on everybody's radar, if you could think ahead to your summer calendars a bit and, um, if we could get that confirmed.
I mean, I got all of them on hold for now, so it doesn't make a difference to me.
Yeah. I mean, right now, both days I know work for me. I, I would just say if we can pick a day sooner, because then if I do travel, I can.
Yeah.
I can block it.
Does it matter for those of you that end up maybe traveling for work, if it's the Tuesday or the Thursday? Is it easier to plan at the beginning of the week versus the end of the week?
Not if I know ahead of time.
Yeah.
Cause I'll plan my travel around it.
Right.
If I need to.
Yeah, I'm a little up in the air, just I'm waiting to, to hear something about that week. They said it could be the sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, or tenth, and we won't know until May. But I think this, I know the sixth is the last day of school, um, so I know for those who maybe participate in last day of school activities or kickball games for fifth graders, I'd be coming in a little tired. Um, probably the sixth, and, but it would be too long to wait to see what availability potential new board members have after they've been elected, correct?
Well, we could reach out because the two board, um, two potential new board members are the, filling two slots, so we could, we could reach out and just check on that.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my only other thought if people.
Mentioning this last day is the of school, though, that is valid, that's a valid point to bring up. And I don't know, and Martha, you're playing a big role in this as well. Is that a long day for you especially?
That's usually a short day. I, they, they usually don't need the superintendent a lot on that day.
We're gonna make you come play kickball at Hollywood.
I don't think we'll play kickball with the fifth graders.
Yes.
It, it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter to me one way or the other, really.
Do you?
I don't have Kathy, we'll, we'll do, Kathy, we'll do a doodle poll, we'll reach out to the two new board members and we'll get it confirmed here quickly.
I, I actually would almost say, I'd prefer possibly the sixth. Just because then I know, because I forgot about.
I, I think I, I would as well.
Because then I, I will, because I'll probably make sure that I'm here.
For last day.
Yeah, for last day.
And with it being the last day of school, makes it more likely probably that families are still in town and not going away yet or something.
True.
So.
I'm not.
All right, so should we?
Let me do it. Cherry said and they just pull the kid that's going.
That happens too.
Martha, check with the other two potential board candidates, although they're more of a shoe-in. And then. Go from there.
All right. All right, but let's, we'll check to see if the sixth is the, is a workable date.
With the preference on the sixth, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
So given that Linda's available, I don't know if we wanna set up any special visitor pass.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not available that week.
All right. All right. Uh, anything else on self-assessment or we got, all right? And we will move to annual policy review cycle, sections one, three, and eight, as was mentioned.
Oh, it's in there.
As mentioned, yes. What day's the test?
The next meeting.
The next meeting.
If I'm quiz, you won't know when it is.
This is just putting you on notice that this is the time when the board will, per the annual policy review that we would like to try to follow, will be, again, reading sections one, three, and eight. Linda already gets an A plus on her homework, cause she's already ahead. She does not have senioritis.
Has she taken the test yet?
On it.
We're still halfway through this video.
Yeah. But I don't think there's anything to discuss on that. I think it's on there just more for, again, putting the board on notice that we'll be sending out those links, that's sort of the, the homework section.
Well, there's even a policy link right here, if you really wanted to read it right now.
Yeah, the policy, I will say that was what I did during this meeting and that's why I let you know. My homework is while we were talking. Cause I was curious to see how long the sections were and I was like, oh, they're really short and I'm familiar with it.
There it is.
Super confusing, we're doing like the first.
So the senior is the starting.
Just started sticking it. Got a few months left. All right. Anything more in policy, uh, review?
No, nothing here.
All right, and if not, that will take us back to public comment.
There is none.
All right, uh, then, uh, then that takes us to future meeting dates. Uh, next up is February first, twenty-twenty-three, committee of the whole, seven PM. The multipurpose room at Hollywood Elementary School. Uh, February fifteenth, not Valentine's Day this year. Regular business meetings, seven PM in the Howser Learning Resource Center. Board will enter into closed session at six fifteen PM if necessary and return to open session at seven PM. Uh, March first, committee of the whole, seven PM, multipurpose room at Ames Elementary School. Uh, March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the regular business meeting, seven PM in the Howser Learning Resource Center. Board will enter into closed session at six fifteen PM if necessary and return to open session at seven. Uh, and if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.